Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, March 8th. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance The mission of the White Plains School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams, so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Dr. Ricka, for a moment of silence?
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection. As we think about the memories of Mary Beth Allen, who taught first grade at Mamaroneck Avenue School from 1964 to 1991; Milton Brown, taught at Rochambeau from 1967 to 1994; Charlotte Crystal, who was an office manager at the high school from 1963 to 1980; Thaddeus or Ted Picos was a math teacher at the high school, and then became chairman of the math department. He was with the district from 1956 to 1983. Alice Russo was office manager in the schools for 25 years and retired in 1985. Lawrence Otis Graham, the class of 1979, was a noted community leader, author, attorney, and broadcast communicator. Was inducted into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame in 2008. And Lenore Giannis, class of 1951, president of Professional Women in Construction and Trailblazer for Women in Business, inducted into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame in 2005. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. Next, we're going to move on to the announcement part of our agenda. And although we will share, you know, some of our activities since our last board meeting, the board wanted to share the following statement. As many of you already know, our reopening committee, the Board of Education, and the entire administration has been working steadily toward the goal of returning our students safely back into the schools since this pandemic started. We never lost sight of this. Our goal will be achieved on March 22nd, when we begin the phasing process of welcoming students back to full-time, in-person education. When we think back to the beginning of the pandemic, we realize how frequently we adapted our methods of delivering instruction, showing flexibility at every turn. It was no easy task, but our White Plains colleagues were able to work in collaborative and creative ways to support our students with the focus on safety for everyone. The impact of the pandemic on all of us, especially our students, is evident. We lived in a world of quarantines that closed entire schools. Sadly, we also lived through hospitalizations of family members who became critically ill, or worst of all, were lost to this virus. We are also working parents. Some of us have children in the district, and this last year has been incredibly hard. And we know that. These are difficult times, to say the least. As I've said many times, trying to control an uncontrollable situation is not easy. While vaccines have bought hope, we cannot let our guard down. We are partners in the fight to eradicate COVID-19. We will still need to adhere to safety measures in place to help maintain a safe learning environment in our schools, as well as in our White Plains community at large. As we move towards reopening, please know that everyone is working hard to ensure everything is in place for students and staff. We place our confidence in our administration to do what is necessary and right for our students to get them back in school. We communicate regularly with our administration, and our goals as a Board of Education are clear. The return to schools was carefully planned and discussed with the goal of bringing our students and staff safely back. For parents and guardians, whether you have selected a return to school or remote learning for the remainder of this school year, your students will receive the same quality instruction they are accustomed to receiving. The pandemic has impacted all of us in different ways, which is why reopening is complicated. We know, however, that the processes and diligence of our district will follow and do everything it takes, and we have done everything it takes, so that all stakeholders are taken into account when we decided to reopen our schools safely and responsibly. As a team, if we move forward together, we move forward towards success. Thank you. Dr. Ricka?
Thank you, President Eller, and good evening, everybody. I'm going to share my screen just for a moment. I did want to speak to reopening in terms of bringing all of our children back, those whose parents and guardians have selected to come back in person five days a week. And, you know, I'm not going to belabor this, but I think you really hit all of the salient points, Rosemarie. This has truly been a challenging, complex journey that we started over a year ago. And, you know, when we started out, we really didn't know a great deal about the virus or about community spread, or even whether or not this was set to become a pandemic, of course. And hindsight is 2020, and, you know, we know how challenging this has been for everyone. Of course, our children and our families the most. We learned each day, every day, more and more and more. And we tried to apply what we learned, both from the professionals and researchers in the medical field and epidemiology, and also what we learned in terms of best practices by working together to create a system that would deliver instruction during the pandemic. We weren't sure how things would look when we eventually created a reopening plan over the summer months and reopened our facilities for our children in a reduced-density capacity, hybrid learning capacity, this past fall. We weren't sure quite if there would be community spread or if we would see spread in our buildings. So what we did was, we tried to apply the most conservative approaches of mitigation that we could to do everything that we could to reduce the chances of spreading illness in our facilities. Our number-one goal was always to keep everyone in the White Plains City School District healthy. We did this collaboratively, with a great deal of feedback from stakeholders in every sector of our community. And one of the things that we're really proud of is that the reopening committee never disbanded. In fact, it continued to function and to operate all throughout the academic year, constantly looking to find efficiencies in the way in which we were delivering instruction, and also to bring more children back throughout the course of the year where possible, even before the advent of the vaccine. Our community's support has been second to none. Even notwithstanding the desires of all of our parents and guardians to get their children back into school safely as quickly as possible, our community has consistently supported the efforts of the district, even in situations where perhaps there was disagreement. There was always collegial and collaborative communication. Public school during a pandemic is not fun. It's not fun for anybody, least of all our children and our families. But through the partnership that we created and through the hard work of all of the members of our team, we are now ready, and it's so exciting, to take these next steps together. The vaccine was our number-one focus immediately. We knew that if we could get access to the vaccine for our faculty and staff members who were willing and able to take it, that it would position us very well to be able to welcome all of our children back five days before the close of the academic year. That was our goal. We didn't know how quickly we would be able to do that. We worked really hard to find opportunities and to partner with the county and to partner with NICE, CSJA, and ASA to get opportunities to our folks. And I'm really very, very happy and proud and grateful that two weeks ago Friday, we were able to achieve our goal. And our goal was to offer vaccine opportunity to 100% of the folks who expressed interest in getting it. And we surpassed that two weeks ago Friday, and all of the folks who had indicated to us that they were interested have been given an opportunity to get vaccinated. That's really something to celebrate in the White Plains City School District and in the White Plains community as a whole. We have been watching and guiding ourselves based on the New York State Department of Health guidelines that are also pretty close to the CDC guidelines. There are going to be some revisions and updates to the New York State Department of Health guidance. Some of you may have heard about this today. One of the big pieces is for folks who are vaccinated to not be caught up in the contact trace isolation and potential quarantine scenarios. And we are pretty confident that the New York State Department of Health is going to follow suit with CDC related to those guidelines. There's a lot of conversation out in the field related to three feet versus six feet of physical distancing. There's some confusion related to whether or not schools can go below six feet in the guidance as it presently exists. It is clear in the guidance that schools can go below the six feet of physical distancing with a layered mitigation approach, meaning you're going to have more than one aspect of mitigation or barrier, if you will, between humans and the virus. In our schools, not only are we utilizing masks and physical distancing, vaccination, and all of the other health-safety standards that have been in place all year long, but we're also utilizing barriers on all of our desks, in our tables, in our common spaces, that will help us to now be able to take these next steps to welcome all of our Tigers back beginning the week of the 22nd. We are still seeking as much physical distance as we can get in all of our facilities. And I know many folks had questions about things like passing in the hallways, common spaces, lunchtime, transportation, all of those areas. We are still seeking as much distance between our children as possible, but we also know that it will go below six feet in some circumstances. And that's why we have the layered mitigation. Folks have asked, "Well, can my child wear two masks?" Sure. Folks have asked, "Can my child wear two masks and a face shield?" Absolutely. You can layer on the mitigation that you feel comfortable with, but we will make sure that in all of our physical spaces and our facilities, that we do have this layered approach. And we know that this is going to help us to continue to be able to keep the spread of COVID-19 and any other communicable illness down as well. All of the orders are placed. They're in. We are receiving barriers. They're being installed in our facilities. We are going to continue to receive supplies into the spring. I do want to thank, once again, Frank Stefanelli and his team, as well as our team members in operations for all of their hard work in ensuring that the White Plains City School District has access to all this personal protective equipment. And we do, and it's on order, and it's being delivered. And that's really great news for us. We're not waiting. You know, we're not stuck in a supply chain breakdown right now, which is fantastic, because you know that school districts all throughout the country, and really, all around the globe, are looking for these same layered mitigation strategies to employ in their facilities. When we welcome our children back, the social and emotional support that we need to provide to them is paramount. Parents and guardians should know that we expect this to be a celebratory type of an environment for our kids. It's a big deal. Coming out of and beginning to arrive at the other end of the pandemic really is a cause for celebration after a period of time of so much trauma and stress and frustration. We know how important it is to ease our children back into the school day. To go through the expectations and how to do school is going to be a process that we need to undergo and undertake with our kids, and we're prepared to do that. We think it's very advantageous for us to be able to spend the latter part of this academic year back together again. We think it will help us to be ready for a regular opening, as regular as it can be in September. That's cause for celebration as well. Remote learning stability was really important to us, and I want to thank all of our teachers. I want to thank Dr. Hand, all the members of our Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee for the hard work that they put into this process to be able to provide our children, who are choosing to remain remote, with the same level of instructional support that they were receiving prior to the phasing. That was important for us in White Plains. To have our children in classrooms, part of classroom communities all throughout the pandemic, was a critical component for us in terms of the wellness and support for our kids. And we're thrilled that we're going to be able to continue to provide that as we phase all of our children back in. The phasing is going to be a process. I know it's not as quickly as some folks would like it. I know it's too quick for other folks. We truly hear from everybody, and everybody comes to this conversation with a different feeling and a different level of comfort. Our goal is to be able to meet everyone where they are. But it's also time to come back to school. And that is a piece of this conversation that we have all been searching for and seeking. And I am absolutely thrilled that we're going to be taking these next steps in a couple of weeks. The reopening committee will continue to meet. We will continue to provide our community with updates. And as Mrs. Eller just mentioned, it will remain very important for us to continue to partner with our county Department of Health, as well as our community, to make sure that we're watching spread all throughout the White Plains community and the Greater Westchester community, to ensure that as we're phasing children back in in school districts all around the county, that community spread levels are staying low, or dropping or declining. And that's going to be, that's going to be an important partnership for us moving forward. And hey, if we start to see something going in the wrong direction, we'll act. You know, that's why I mentioned that we're going to continue with the reopening committee and monitoring all of these situations, because we don't want to move in the wrong direction at all. Monday, March 22nd, kindergarten, ninth grade, and 12th grade will return to school five days, the week of April 5th, 1st, 2nd, 6th, 7th, and the week of April 12th, which will be the final week of the phasing and the week that will have all of our Tigers back, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 8th, 10th, and 11th. You'll notice it's sort of a pyramid structure in terms of the number of grade levels coming back in each week. The last, the third week, the greatest number of grade levels. That's to ensure that our facilities are ready to welcome our children back and to make sure that all of the layered mitigation that we have on order and that's being installed, that everybody has the appropriate time to be able to get that ready for our kids. So, exciting news, and we will continue to share updates with our community as we move into phasing and then throughout that process. As mentioned in the communication that we sent out last week, for this period of time, Wednesday will remain a half-day in-person for children. The second half of the day will be asynchronous, and that will help to allow us to be able to continue to provide that hybridized instruction, well, remote instruction, if you will, to all of our children, or the number of children who are at least initially remaining full remote. We do anticipate that as time goes on, that some of those children will also matriculate back into full in-person, and that's great. If we can get to a place by the end of the academic year, by the full-on spring, where the vast majority of our children are in-person, we consider that to be a win. So, thanks for giving me a couple of minutes just to give you an update here, President Eller. And of course, if there's any questions from the trustees, I'd be happy to answer them. But I know you've all asked me a lot of questions as we've been planning this process, so thanks for that.
Next, we'll move into our general announcements on our activities as board members. And if we could give a brief account of anything we'd like to mention. Does anyone have any announcements, any other announcements? Yep, I see you, Sean.
Okay, I'll be brief. So, the first thing I wanted to mention was attending a PTA Council meeting in February. And I do want to give a shout-out to the PTAs. The PTA Council is our umbrella PTA, and, you know, with representation from the different schools in the district. And so you really get to hear what's going on. And I just want to congratulate the PTAs on the work they've done to really engage our parents, to enrich our children, to engage in community outreach, fundraising, you know, food pantries, book collections, gift collections. It really does take a village, and we are very appreciative of the work that the PTAs have been doing. I will mention Church Street Reading Night, which I know some of us participated in. It was a Zoom reading. I got to read my favorite children's book called Mole Music. It's fabulous, and so that was very enjoyable. I got to go to a CDC-US Department of Education webinar. I got to sit in on, which also is interesting and frustrating at the same time, because, you know, the guidelines are guidelines, and it's very hard sometimes to have concrete information. And so, you know, everybody is navigating these waters as really best they can. Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Legislative Panel with our state legislators. Joe was one of the moderators. So, that was, you know, really useful. And also, the Westchester-Putnam, I think, Rockland PTA Regional PTA Association had an Equity and Rachel Justice program with Natalie Swurger, who is the facilitator that we are working with on our own equity work in the White Plains School District. So she did a program for the regional PTAs as well. And, you know, our work in the White Plains School District is going to be rolling out more and more into the community. So that was a really excellent introduction as well. So, thank you.
Does anyone else want to mention anything before I mention anything?
I'll just, a couple of things. Many of you may have already noticed on our school Facebook page, two students, Nathaniel Fields and Zaida Polanco. They're our Poetry Slam Regional winners, and will go on to represent our state mid-month. Go to states and represent our school at the state-level competition. I do have to announce, and I would be remiss if I did not mention that the swim team broke the 200-medley record, I believe, which was, has been up there since 2010. Don't ask me how I know. And it's really good, it's really good. I will say my younger son has a few records, and that was one of them to be on that. And my reaction is that, you know, we should be getting stronger and better athletically, and these records should fall as we get stronger. So a big shout-out to the swim team. The girls' swim team, I believe, started practice today. These are virtual meets, and it's just great that the students have an opportunity to compete. I also attended a Social Action Committee panel discussion on education, the foundation to build upon, and was sponsored by Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity. Dr. Hand and Dr. Hand participated, and Dr. Ricka participated as well. And I also had the opportunity to participate in the Church Street Virtual Reading. And it was a very nice experience to see and interact with the students. So excited. Any other comments?
Before we move forward, we will have, I'd like to open our public hearing on the District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan, which was discussed at our last board meeting. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on this plan? And the chat is open in case anyone has a question or a comment on the plan. This is our public hearing for it. We are now at the part of our agenda where we're at public participation. If anyone wants, has any, wants to speak during public participation, please just put your name in the chat. Note that you are welcome to address the board, the administration, on any comment that you may have. We ask that you protect the privacy and dignity of our students as matters of a more personal nature. May this be discussed directly with the administration. We ask that you please keep your statements to three minutes. Will there be any public participation tonight?
Rosemarie, if there's not any public participation, can you just jump back to that item? The public hearing. I just wanted, if we could mention, I think that we added, it was a, the State Education Department asked us to add in a response to a pandemic, right? That into our safety plan, right? So, and it was basically just an addition of what we did and what we would do in the event of a future pandemic, right? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for that thing.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
Yep, thank you. That's very important.
Hopefully, it's 100 years from now.
Yeah.
And I don't know, can you hear me any better or no?
Yes, now we can hear you.
All right.
Since we jumped back to the, to clarify the public, the public hearing on the District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan, we're going to jump back to your comment, because it was about swimming. And I would be remiss, I would be remiss if I did not let you finish your statement on swimming there.
Sorry, there's a lot of people here with a lot of time. But again, it's another return to normalcy and to as much as our former life as we know. There's, you know, a lot of students on the girls' swimming team. There are a lot of young men on the boys' swimming team. These are positive steps, and hopefully, we see more of these as we move along. I know the coaches and everybody is working really hard to make sure that everybody stays safe. And, you know, like I said, you know, I've got two daughters on that team. And it's really nice to hear all those measures that are taking place and happening, even, you know, through one day of practice, just that you know that that is happening. And again, everyone's doing the best they can to get that, to get us back to that next step.
Yeah, I think there are about 40, 40 girls on the team, if I heard right. So that's exciting. White Plains always has the most swimmers. So, I see that there's no public participation, nothing in the chat. At this point, Dr. Ricka, we'd like to turn it back to you. We have next the presentation of the preliminary budget.
Thank you very much, President Eller. I'll go back to my screen share. I do also, just as part of my superintendent's report, want to remind everyone that while the 2021-2022 calendar has been approved and is posted, we are, we still have to work out Juneteenth and the observation of Juneteenth in 2022 falls on a Monday. So we have to, we have to work that out and how we're going to observe that. And we will, and we'll get back to you and just amend, or make a recommendation to amend the calendar accordingly, based on the new law that's in place. And we're looking forward to officially celebrating Juneteenth, of course. And we've always done it in White Plains, but it's great that we'll be celebrating it now officially on the books as well. I do also want to recognize and congratulate, for the first time, I think, at a board meeting publicly, the Class of 2021 valedictorian and salutatorian. Lauren Allison Azrin is our valedictorian, and our salutatorian is Catherine Joyce Stanton. So congratulations, Tigers, fantastic work. We look forward to celebrating you in person at graduation come June, and that's going to be very exciting. As President Eller mentioned, also, congratulations to Zaida and Nathaniel for Poetry Out Loud. Also, our White Plains High School senior Marco Greco won the title of Emerging Young Artist for his one-act play entitled Bang. And he's going to shadow a professional director at his play, rather, and his play will be performed by professional actors this spring at the Palace Theater in Connecticut. Roar, once again, won first place by the American Scholastic Press Association for its publication. So congratulations to the Roar staff at White Plains High School. Uh, in addition to a tremendous swimming season for our young men, we, uh, I think you may have mentioned Cooper Lang also set a school record, um, for, uh, the 100 fly with a time of 53, 55. So congratulations to Cooper. Hockey was, uh, has been fantastic and Captain John Myers, uh, broke the White Plains all-time record for scoring with his 194th goal. And also congratulations to Assistant Captain Danny Cordozo, who scored his 100th point. Uh, he scored 15 goals, five assists in four games. Congratulations to Danny as well. And, uh, White Plains High School track really, uh, just tremendous. Want to congratulate Mia Priori, who set the White Plains High School record for the 1,500-meter walk. Um, and she, uh, her time was, uh, 8:06.08. Um, and she broke a, uh, record that was set in 2015. So congratulations to all of our Tigers, uh, for all of those, uh, really amazing athletic and academic accomplishments. And Jim, Mr. Ricky's absolutely right. Uh, you know, to be able to be celebrating our student athletes despite everything that has been going on, um, is, I think, uh, a feather in the cap of White Plains. And it doesn't happen without all of that hard work from our health services, uh, team and also our coaching staff and support staff. And of course, uh, Mr. Cameron as well. So thanks to everyone and congratulations. All right, the moment everyone has been waiting for. Uh, we are very excited to present this preliminary budget, um, video, or rather, uh, presentation, um, for two reasons. The goals associated with the budget, uh, construction process this year were really twofold. Um, one was to preserve our academic, an extracurricular program for our children, making sure that they have access to all the outstanding programming that they had prior to the pandemic. And the second was to ensure a, um, uh, sensitivity to the tremendous struggle and, and challenge, um, in our community and make sure that the budget, the proposed budget that we put forward not only preserves and, and supports the program, but is also fiscally conservative and recognizes, um, the difficult, the fiscal difficulty in our, in our community and of course, in our state. Our strategic plan guides everything, uh, that, that you will see and that we'll talk about in, uh, in tonight's presentation related to the budget. And in this year's strategic plan, of course, we had to make some changes associated with the pandemic. So, um, while we kept our, our three guiding principles, um, really static, we did, we did enhance them to, uh, include what we would need to do to provide instruction and support to our children, uh, throughout the pandemic. There is a lot to contend with. Uh, there's been a lot to contend with. And, and you know, we're going to continue to have challenges as we move forward, um, despite all of the, the effort and the hard work, um, that folks have, have been putting forward, not just in White Plains or through the state of New York, but also throughout our country. There's just been a lot. Um, so everything from, you know, all of the, the challenges associated with the pandemic proper. Um, and then of course, the, the additional, uh, challenges that we faced as a nation and as a, as a national community. The, the challenges according, uh, associated with the, the economy, um, uncertainty at the federal government level for, for a, a number of, of reasons. Civil unrest, food insecurity, all throughout our nation, educational insecurity and the challenges brought on by the pandemic. And as many of you know, unfortunately, in other parts of our country, there are still areas where, where schools have not opened their doors to children all year long. Uh, and, and of course, that is a major challenge, uh, for, for many communities. Uh, sustained stress and trauma associated with the ongoing, um, stress of the pandemic, safety and security issues. And of course, uh, whether the question, whether or not there was going to be federal government intervention by way of stimulus, which of course, um, has happened. And, and now we're, um, going to be in the process of determining how that is going to roll out in the state of New York. Every school district, uh, was charged with putting together a plan um, to really reinvent education, reinvent the way in which we teach our children and, and support our children and our families, um, throughout, uh, the pandemic. That has a fiscal and a financial, or a financial impact, of course. Um, we're, we're already over $6 million, uh, associated with, uh, what we had to do to get our facilities ready to welcome children back in the fall. And then of course, to welcome our children back fully now in the spring. Um, I'm not going to go through the listing of all, of all of the, uh, of, of all of the various protect, uh, personal protective equipment and, and equipment that we needed to, uh, that we needed to buy and put in place in our buildings. But you all know, uh, there, there was a great deal of effort to get ready for remote and hybrid learning. We're really proud that in White Plains, every one of our children had access, has access to a device. Um, if children don't have access to internet, um, they, they were given access through the school district. We're really proud of that. We're, we're, we are proud that we're able to support our children and our families that way. Um, and that of course came with expense. Uh, but also we were able to do that, uh, as quickly as we were, not just because of the hard work of our team members, but also because we already had a very strong, robust program in place with one-to-one and we're increasing that and we're planning to increase that as we were going forward. And that helped us. Uh, we had a lot to, to, to cover and to do with training, um, and supporting our, our faculty and staff members. Can't say enough about our faculty and staff members, uh, and everything that they've done to support our children. And not only that, but also to learn themselves, uh, and to grow and to try new things, um, and, and to try new ways to support our children. And, and, um, they continue to do that to this day. The district, uh, continues to take a conservative approach to our budgeting. Um, we want to make sure that we are in solid position, come what may, in the future. And there's so much that's uncertain, particularly when you're talking about fiscal plans. But we make a point of it and I, and this is where I like to thank, um, Dr. Vikaro Teich, all of, all of our team members in the finance department, all of our, our administrators and support staff members and teachers who participate in the budget, uh, construction process. And of course, our, our finance committee spends hours and hours, um, and, and really makes sure that puts our proposed budget through its paces to ensure that we are living up to our goals of having a fiscally conservative spending plan that devotes the, the, the lion's share of the resources to instruction. And a few slides, you, you will see, we're very proud to be there again this year uh, in our proposed spending plan. Our guiding principles are the same every year, which really helps us to continue to maintain the same type of approach to budgeting. We want to protect the instructional core. We never want to be talking about taking things away from our children. We never want to be talking about reducing opportunity or reducing experiences for them. Uh, we have to evaluate what we'd like to have versus what we really need to have. And we do that not just during budget time, but all year long. And we make sure that we're preventing costs and preserving our investments wherever we possibly can. We have found over, you know, the course of many years, and this, of course, is something that's not, uh, new to the White Plains City School District efficiencies. How can we do things better with the resources that we already have so that we don't have to necessarily increase resources to achieve the same result? Uh, a, a, a prime example of that are, are one-time-only expenditures annually that allow us to do things like devote, um, resources to our facilities, uh, where we might be able to avoid, um, the, the costs associated with bonding. Delaying program impact. So last year, we knew that we were going to have to hold off on hiring and we did. Uh, we did not hire for the new positions that we had put into the, um, the proposed budget last year. And what we then did was we utilized those resources, um, to be able to cover the costs associated with the pandemic in, in some instances. That has been helpful to us. It's been helpful in terms of, of being able to, to get ready, um, to, to fully reopen. Um, and we'll, we'll continue to do that. As you'll see in this, in this budget, um, is really, uh, very straightforward. There's no bells and whistles. We're preserving the program. And then finally, of course, if we have to make changes, we want to restructure. We don't want to eliminate. And so all of these principles are interwoven throughout, um, this, this entire proposed spending plan. We've done a lot in terms of, of communicating within the school district as we get ready for the, the budget presentation that you're seeing right now. Everything from long-range planning to our non-instructional budget, to our instructional budget. And, um, I just am very grateful for all of the hard work that our team members put into making, uh, all of these steps in the budget process successful so that we get to where we are today. Everything we do is constantly about improvement. Even during the pandemic, we're reviewing our program. And next year, we know we're going to be taking additional steps, um, to continue to improve our services to our kids. Now, program review in, in, in our district is an ongoing process. It, it is, it, you know, all, all of our curricular areas are really living areas where faculty and staff members and administrators are always looking for new ways to be able to bolster the curricular, um, experiences of our children and, um, also make sure that we're delivering our, our instruction in, in best practices. And constantly refining what we have and what we're presenting to our children to make it relevant and engaging. Ongoing process, continuous improvement, always seeking to get better. Next year, we're going to be looking at guidance, our elementary guidance program. We're going to continue to review our inclusive practices. What are the ways in which we are allowing for every single child in our school district to access whatever it is that they want to explore and learn about? Um, rev, re-response to intervention and our protocols associated with those in class, um, supports are, are going to be looked at next year. Physical education, health, um, K-12, uh, we're, we're taking a look at that. Uh, we held off on a, on a district-wide communications audit, uh, this past year due to the pandemic. And we are looking forward to be able to audit the way in which we communicate with our community and improve. Um, we think that we do a decent job of communication, but we know that we can always do better. Um, so that audit will help us to identify those areas, um, that we can continue to build upon and then get away from things that aren't working well. And science in grades seven through 12. We were very careful and thought, well, we, we, we like to think that we were thoughtful um, in how we approached our programming and how we would approach our spending during the pandemic to maximize our, our fiscal, our, our fiscal outlook and, and our stability throughout the process. So again, I'm not going to read slides to you, but we, we made some really targeted decisions, um, to make sure that, uh, that we were in solid shape. And, and I'll, I will just bring you down to the last point. The overall reduction in the 2021, 2022 Revenue and Appropriations Budget is 3.2, uh, 3.62 million or 1.55%. And do you mind, do you just want to talk just a little bit about how important this was for us, um, this year?
Um, it, very important. I mean, in that part of the long-range planning process, you know, we took very decisive steps to hold on the 2021 initiatives. Um, and that in turn, as you mentioned previously, Dr. Rika, really allowed us now to address our COVID-related expenses, do some of that one-time-only, uh, project work in facilities and to support technology replacement. Um, but also fund, um, future debt payments through '25, '26, which helps reduce the tax levy impact. So, and then that was removed permanently from the development of the '21, '22 budget. So that overall reduction from the current year to next year is really related to that important decision. Um, and of course, it's part of our long-range planning and trying to really, you know, guide where we're going. We, we also took into account that we would be facing a significant state aid reduction. So all that really helped, you know, shape this budget and that planning that took place.
Taking a look, again, just a, a summary of, of the preliminary budget. You can see, uh, where, where I'll bring you is to the total tax levy to be issued and bring it right across to the 1.23%. So this year, we're recommending a 1.23% increase to the budget. That is well below the tax cap. Um, and again, this, this again is in recognition to the challenging fiscal landscape in our community. We want, we have been blessed with support from the White Plains, uh, community for, for our schools. And that's why our schools and the programming is, is so dynamic and, and, um, there, there are so many different opportunities for our children. It's because of that community support. We understand and we, we know, um, how important it is for us to do our part, uh, during, during this process. And that's why we are proposing to bring in a budget that is well below the tax cap, well below where we were, where, where, uh, we would be allowed to be to the 1.23%. The vast majority, as everybody in White Plains knows, uh, of, of our revenues come from real property taxes, um, almost 84%. We don't receive as much state aid as we should. We continue to advocate for more. Uh, we're, we're advocating for more foundation aid this year. Certainly with the federal stimulus that will be coming, um, we're advocating that that be directed right to the school districts so that they can be applied, can be applied, um, as needed, not only for, uh, COVID, uh, related costs, uh, but also to make sure that the programming in school districts is preserved as well, including of course, ours. Again, this is just giving you a comparison, um, and I'll bring you down to the percentage increase. Uh, we were allowable this year is 3.88%. Um, we are coming in at a proposed 1.23%. Joe, what does that mean? Tell me what, how does that relate to me? Uh, so on the average assessed home in the, uh, the White Plains City School District, it's about a $136 increase a year, um, under $12 a month. Uh, and again, that is soup to nuts. Everything in the school district preserving all of our, preserving, supporting all of our programming. No reduction in, in, um, in capacity in terms of, of our teachings, their support staff. So this is really, and I hope, I hope you're as happy about this as I am. It's really good news for the school district and for the community. Now, some folks might say, well, wait a second, are we going to be in trouble if we, if we don't go to the 3.88%? No. Um, thanks again to, to Anne and her team. Um, we have projected out, and this is, this is one of the benefits, right, of, of long-range planning. We have projected out and we assess that we will be in strong fiscal, um, standing in, in the next, uh, few years. Now, of course, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. None of us knows what, what the, the total economy will look like. Um, but with everything that we're seeing right now and what we're predicting, we think that we'll be in very solid, um, shape come, uh, you know, future years. The governor's executive state aid proposal, in my estimation, has a tremendous amount of problems. I heard today that the legislature is going to, um, legislators, the legislature is planning on dismissing all of these, uh, all of these proposals that the governor put in, um, in, in, including the STAR reimbursement, which is now tied into the school districts, which will, will be an actual cut to the school districts. Um, the, uh, the, the collapsing of, of expense-driven aids, um, as well as an area that we, we've heard, um, the legislature is, is going to reject. This is a, a, an issue, uh, for us, and I'll talk a little bit about STAR in the future. But it, the, the school districts will no longer be receiving the STAR payment from the state, which comes to a, a, a real cut of, uh, right about 4.8 million. Foundation aid is frozen for the second, uh, second year in a row. And, uh, as, as, uh, trustee Kane Letizia has brought up in the past, the White Plains City School District is owed over, over, uh, $13 million in, um, foundation aid. We are one of the districts that hasn't hit the 60% yet. Um, we're advocating to at least get us to 60% of the foundation aid this year, um, as well. And I did mention that the categorical, uh, expense-driven consolidated aids, um, were in there too. And, uh, that, that was all being rejected by the legislature. And they're going to have to, they're going to have to negotiate the one house, um, and then the final budget. Where do we spend our money? Well, um, we're really proud that we spend the vast majority of our funds exactly where it should be, um, in our classrooms, in our programming with our kids. Uh, and you'll see here, uh, just in terms of the breakdown of where the expen, uh, the, the expense is, um, uh, well over, uh, 70% of, of the expenses in our district are devoted to program. And that's the way it should be. Thinking about demographic data, just to give you a sense very quickly, um, we are, again, and not in bad shape in terms of our enrollment. We anticipate that we will see a bump in, uh, in, in new kindergarten registrants, um, in the latter part of the academic year. Uh, but over the trend line over the next several years has us losing, um, a handful of students each year. When I say losing, uh, you know, matriculating out and then of course, lower cohort, uh, lower birth rates, which, which equal smaller cohorts as the children, um, age into, uh, K-12. So any concerns related to, um, overcapacity, um, is a concern I think we can put to the side for the moment. Uh, fortunately, White Plains is not seeing a dramatic loss in enrollment, um, as we're seeing in other places. But we do have, uh, we do have a couple of years of, of lower birth. as we're seeing in other places, but we do have, we do have a couple of years of of lower birth. And that will impact us as we move into the future. In terms of staffing, really, again, not not a lot at all to talk about this evening because we're not really increasing at all. Really, we have a, we have a point two oh art teacher that we're recommending, some reclassification of staff. But it's it's really important to to recognize that there's no financial impact for any of these changes for our full time equivalent employees. So again, very, I think, very conservative and positioning us well to really be able to weather any any challenges that may arise.
And Joe, the positions that we budgeted for in the previous budget last year that we sort of froze and didn't hire on those, those are all on a holding pattern as well.
Yes, sir. Yep, absolutely. We're we're going to hold on all that. And in fact, part of the way in which we get to where we are with the one point two, three percent is by utilizing some of those funds and and really sending it back into payoff debt, which then, of course, you know, is is really a a direct assist to property tax payers as well, because it's going to get our debt paid off faster. In terms of tax certioris, you know, the district is self funded. We do anticipate that we're going to see an increase in folks filing for for tax certioris over the next year. Employee benefits, we projected, we're right where we needed to be, where we are seeing increases, but manageable increases that we predicted and that were predicted. And then with health insurance, we're really in, as as many of you know, we're in a consortium where we self insure with other areas, school districts, and we continue to perform very, very well in that consortium, far, far lower than the industry standards in terms of increases to the the overall insurance plan. We did have a BOSI's district wide print shop that was situated at the high school that is no longer going to be part of of our operations. That became really no longer fiscally viable for BOSI's. So the district is no longer going to be housing that, but we are working to make sure that we can support all of our facility needs in terms of copying moving forward. So that's going to be a net savings for the district as well, which is, of course, a big help. We're going to have one time only expenses that will help to avoid additional costs in the future. And as mentioned earlier, the personnel costs related to increases are all connected to collective bargaining agreements. And finally, contractual increases. Areas that BOSI services, insurance, transportation, utilities, all these things. Somewhere between two and four percent increases we're projecting over the next fiscal year. This is just another look at the three part. Your capital, your program, and your administrative, and you can see in twenty one, twenty two for our preliminary proposed budget, almost seventy eight percent of 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 the budget will be going to the program. This just breaks it out in a different way. And of course, this this presentation will be available to anybody to peruse on our website. But it gives you a sense of what's included in all of those area costs. So administrative is, and you think administrative, you think administrators, but there's a lot more that's in there. Same thing with program, you think, okay, teachers, but there's a ton more that's in there as well. And then, of course, capital. We always talk about what happens when a budget fails, if a budget fails. Well, this year, if if the budget were to fail, it would be an additional two point three million dollar reduction from the preliminary budget. And that, of course, is, that's unfortunately, that, you know, is programmed. We don't, we don't want to be in that position. My hope is that our community sees this fiscal, proposed fiscal spending plan, recognizes the the steps that the Board of Education and the district has taken to make sure that we're toeing the line on fiscal conservatism, making sure that we are giving a nod to the property taxpayers in in our community. Next steps, we have our budget workshop, which will take place on the twenty second of March, and we're looking forward to that. And that will be also the first day of of the first week of phasing. For folks who are at home right now watching, just so you know, we will, the Board of Education will be meeting in person on the twenty second. That's not to say that the Board of Education will always meet in person because we are actually still collecting information and data related to folks utilizing Zoom to be part of board meetings. And we're finding that it is advantageous for for more people to be able to participate in real time. So that's great. But on the twenty second, we will be in person and more information about the meeting, meeting space and everything will be available online through our postings as normal. Happy to answer any questions that from the Board of Education, but I I know that we've we've been through this several times already.
Joe, I just wanted to mention that on the the meeting on the twenty second, although we'll be in person, it will also be available by Zoom for the
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you, Cheryl. It will because we are still constrained in the number of of human beings that can be in a room at any given time. So yes, we are going to be, and we're going to be looking at doing that a different way. So so for folks who are watching or or with us right now. In the past, we tried it where we all had devices in front of us. That didn't work out so well. So we're going to try it a new way where we use a camera and the camera will be the 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 main way of projecting the Zoom. So we'll still be able to see people if they want to ask questions or or, you know, make a comment. But at the same time, hopefully, we won't have to worry about feedback and all that good stuff in terms of being able to communicate and hear us and the trustees.
I just wanted to mention something, just as Chairman of Finance Committee, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank on Dr. Anne Vakarateish for her incredible amount of work. I mean, people may think this is finance, she's just a number cruncher, but that's just not so. Everything Anne does is with an eye to how the, to the kids. She knows everything that's going on. She's, it's an eye to programming, it's an eye to transportation, it's an eye to all sorts of things. But the bottom, bottom line is, it's about the children. And she also has a keen eye, of course, to what's going on in our community and the importance to be fiscally responsible to our community. So I just want to thank her because I think she's extraordinary.
Thank you, Dr. Stein. Thank you, Board. And all your support and Dr. Eka and all the work that everyone does, you know, certainly in the business office, we work hard every day, making sure nothing gets expended and continue to try to save dollars and still enhance our program.
So I wanted to echo what Randy said. I think it's my, Cheryl, it's our fifteenth year on the on the board, I think. This is such a brilliant budget. It's at a time where we've been through this this incredible pandemic. There's so much uncertainty in terms of revenue and what kind of aid and support we're going to bring in. And we acknowledge the 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 harm, the what our taxpayers have experienced. So I, it's, it's a budget that preserves program while acknowledging where we are. And I just, I just wanted to echo everything that Randy said and everyone who was involved in putting together this budget. I I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
If I could just jump in quickly. I think the important thing to talk about here is that this is, this is not rolling back a program. This continues the work of the school district, and I think that's really important for people to understand. It's not a, it's not a contingent budget by any means. And that, and that's very good. And I think as as a committee, as Dr. Stein said, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into it and and a lot of communication. We want to make sure we're sustainable because this is, we're at a tax cap barrel. We want to make sure that we're not just pulling one rabbit out of the hat if if we need to go below that limit for one year. We don't want to harm the district. We want to make sure our children and our students have what they need year after year. And I know there was a lot of diligence in making sure that that we could take care of that and also provided that you have that flexibility. We're in the, we're in our pandemic situation, and of course, I think we all feel like we see the light at the end of the tunnel. But we don't know when when we're going to get out of that tunnel, and I think this this budget gives you that flexibility to be able to react to the circumstances that present the district as we get, as we get into the school year. It's a difficult year. We had the pandemic. You had an Office of State Comptroller's Office. There's, there's a lot going on. And and I think, you know, just one more log on the fire of of all the things that can happen. But it's important, and this is the beginning of a process, our budget process for the year. Dr. Rick, Dr. Ricky, you mentioned we have the the other budget meetings.
Yes, we have, yep.
That's very important. Yeah, that's very important. And I think this is where we are, and the state will come up with their budget by supposedly by April first. Ironic that it's on April Fool's Day. But again, we'll know more then, and that's, that's important, too. I mean, we should be able to react if need be, once we see that state budget and we and we know where we are. And again, this is a process, and this is the beginning of the process. And I think it's important that we're engaged in this and we listen and and thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
And I also just say that it's also not a maintenance or stagnant budget. It allows for continuous improvement, for continuous assessment, for capital improvements, for, you know, professional development with respect to curriculum and instruction. So we are, it is a budget that moves us forward, although it is fiscally conservative.
That's a really, that's a really great point, Cheryl. I mean, that, I I think, not to repeat what you just said, but that's really important. We're doing, we're going to be able to continue to do and 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 bring that high level of service in this budget, right? As you and Jim just said, you know, this is not, this is not rolling back. This is not, you know, austerity. This, this is just making a really targeted decision, a thoughtful decision about about how we are approaching. And we couldn't, I have to tell you, we wouldn't be able to do it if we hadn't had long range planning in place, thinking about the, you know, the future, being able to project and predict where we'll be with spending. That, that's the, that's the game changer there.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Those, those, those comments were very, very thoughtful and and spot on. Thank you, everyone. Now, we'll move on to the portion of our agenda. Before we move to summary action items, I just wanted to reiterate that although we did not have any public comment tonight, should you have a question or want to share anything, remember, the administration will be happy to discuss with you any matters that you may not have discussed or or stated tonight. So I just wanted to say that. Next, we'll move to our summary action items. We have summary and action items, numbers four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Joe, the Dr. Vakar.
Absolutely. I'd like to draw your attention to item B, donations. And we're very grateful for the following donations and thankful. Four hundred and sixty eight dollars from various donors for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship Fund. Eight hundred and seventy dollars from various donors for the I. Dan Greenstein Memorial Music Scholarship. Six thousand dollars from Ernestine Glenn for the E. Glenn Creative Writing Scholarship and the E. Glenn HBCU Scholarship. Five hundred dollars from Jacob Dallas for the Mary June Bayek Love of Nursing Scholarship. And a a brand new Clorox Disinfecting Machine from Imperial Dade for youth district wide. And Frank Stefanelle, thank you for that because my understanding is that our vendor, when provided with an opportunity to give a school district a free Clorox machine, immediately said, White Plains, they've been using them before they even get, they, before they were even cool, right, Frank? So thank you very much to all of our donors.
Thank you. It's, you know, it's, we are just very fortunate that that so many people really support us with donations. And as Dr. Rick said, we very much appreciate that. And we'll put that machine especially to good use. I know we will, right, Frank? Yeah. Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Rosemary, I just have to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Next, we'll, we'll move on to our individual action items. We have the recommended approval of the district's safety plan. And that was our brief public meeting on that to solicit any questions or concerns. So now we're at the portion where we are going to accept that plan. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any, any questions, any lingering questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next, our, our last individual action item, we have the recommended approval of a settlement with the certified staff member, the number of the staff members, as noted in the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next, we're going to move on to board discussion. We have a revised policy, and this would be the first reading. We have documentation on the independent educational evaluations policy, otherwise as IEE. This is the first reading of it, and we will vote on it at a later time. Are there any questions? Again, we'll be voting on this and accepting this at a later time. This will be the first reading of that policy. Next, we'll go out to committee reports and and do a report out there.
So we had a curriculum met, and it was a very interesting meeting. Along, thanks Deb for putting that together, Dr. Deborah Hand. Albert Laporte came across a wonderful program, as as my understanding is called Class Kick. And Class Kick allowed the math teachers in the math department to provide in real time lessons and support to the students, allowed them to communicate with one another. So Albert presented to us, as did Rocco and Kathy Bargolis. And it was just a really wonderful presentation about how the staff in the district, the teaching staff, the administrators have dug so deep and along the way have tried to meet the needs of our students. And one of the things that really impressed all of us was that just a few years ago, if this pandemic would have hit, we would have been in much worse shape than we are now. But the, 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 the technology that's available to us and is continuing to come to light over the last year has really permitted our educators to really, really meet the needs of our kids to the extent that they could and to do it in real time and to do it in a, in a, in a way that was just so, just so interesting. I know Cheryl, who who's a math whiz, was even more impressed than I was.
I got to see some Calc three, which was really fun. But I think it was also a wonderful example of collaboration among, you know, administrators, you know, Albert and Kathy working with Rocco and sort of everybody really jumping on on this new technology and really leveraging it for, you know, the advantages it brings to working with our students. So it was really a collaborative effort, and we've seen so much of that, especially even more so during the pandemic. So it's been rewarding.
Yeah, I'll agree with that as I was there as well. The, the great thing with that is that you don't have to worry that this is just a platform of technology where we're asking our students to sit in front of a screen. This is interactive, and what this allows is for our students to get even more attention from, from the educators and the teaching professionals inside of the classroom. So really, it's, it's like, it's like more, you know, more attention, and that's what we want our students to have. It's amazing that this pandemic has brought forth some of these tools that will really prove to be, you know, some game changers when we're all back in the classroom. These are not tools that, okay, we don't need them anymore because now we're all back in person. These are tools that will have a good life in our schools and really help, you know, help, help our students to succeed. So that, that's what I I took away from that. Thank you for the curriculum. I will say that I was able to attend the Youth Bureau monthly meeting. And I really, really have to give a shout out to the work of the Youth Bureau for our children. There are discussions underway with planning for the summer jobs for our students. And I think, and even in these, you know, dire times, that this work still moves forward and our kids have opportunities. I think it's a real testament to the the collaboration between the community and the schools, but really a testament to what our community will do to ensure that our students have the opportunities they've been accustomed to. So I just wanted to say that. So I just wanted to say that. Anybody else want to comment on any committee meetings? I know finance.
Finance, and much of what we talked about is here at the board and you've heard. But for anybody who wants a truly granular detailing, we have a 519 page budget finder. We are saving trees however, because of this digital world, it is all online, thank goodness. But we used to in fact get this finder in hard copy. So I'm thrilled to be able to actually look through it online. But we do have that, all of the details of how everything was figured out.
Rosemary, Special Education Met. Rose, we had met last week, I think, and we, in addition, you were talking about summer services. We discussed planning for summer school this summer. It's already, that planning has already begun. And we had a really great presentation from Kerry Levine on the science of reading. And I know it's been presented at a few board meetings now as part of curriculum, but it's really exciting to see us using some of the science in terms of phonics and really looking at some of those, the gaps in the programs that existed and filling those with some really great resources and the partnership between the reading teachers and the special education department. You can see between curriculum and special education, just the communication was really exciting to see. What's that?
Possible to get, for those of us not on that committee, I'd be fascinated to see the presentation or.
I thought Deb sent it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and we also looked at the code of conduct and aligning it with our equity work in terms of language and really making that work and reviewing suspensions and, and just how we're enforcing that and, and looking at restorative justice measures as well. So code of conduct and looking at summer services as well as the science of reading. So, so really great meeting all around.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for mentioning the code of conduct because I have been able to make some of the, some of the, the code of conduct. I guess the, the big, big meeting, I don't know what to call it. But I've been, been able to, to participate a little there and it's a very thoughtful process, really looking at everything and really pulling in our equity work, as you said, Kane. So I, I'm really happy and, and, and thank you for inviting me to sit on that. I'm sorry I couldn't make it today. That, that, you know, work and that job sometimes calls away. But I'm really, you know, I, I do enjoy the discussion and the ability to weigh in. And we do have student representatives on, on, on that committee as well. And it's just really nice to get insight, you know, from the students. So the, the last meeting that I went to last week was really, really good. So I, I do want to, I do want to recognize that. And we also did equity work as well. And we're marching towards a policy, which is very exciting because we're, it, it feels like we are moving forward and we're almost done. And, and you walk away wondering, how did we get, you know, it's just been so much to talk about and unpack, like how did we get there? But I think you, Cheryl, and I have really been coupled with Dr. Hand in terms of policy. So it's been really informative and I think rewarding and very important work around district, no doubt. So aligning everything through that is important and to be able to, you know, be on the equity committee and participate on the code conduct meetings is, is very important. So thank you, thank you, and thank you for that. Do we have any more updates? Okay, sounds good. Just to reiterate, if anyone has anything they'd like to share with us, the administration will be happy, happy to talk with you. Whether you think about it 10 minutes from now or tomorrow, please let us know your thoughts. Your feedback is imperative and it's so important and we welcome it. So I just wanted to say that. And if there's nothing else, and if there's nothing else, may I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Please, please, please be safe and we will be together soon. Thank you, everyone, for all you do. Thank you. Good night.